5:03. May I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yeah, I did not put it on the agenda, but we do have minutes from the last board, the last, uh, policy meeting.
Well, it was just you and I, so I don't know.
It was just you and I.
So we should go along.
We should.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of, um, Policy Committee, June 3rd.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye. And you abstain?
I abstain.
Done.
What was the motion? I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
To accept the minutes.
To accept the minutes.
From June 3rd.
And we did, and we, I, I was the...
I have to abstain if it wasn't there.
Right.
I was there.
Okay. So you have...
I, I'm all, I'm, have them in order now. I am good to go.
So...
I have, wanna do the old ones that we're just gonna bring back to the board?
That'd be great. We're talking, you're talking A, B, C, G, B, E, D, and J, I, C, G, right?
Um... So did you bring copies, say, headman on my phone that you emailed?
I did not bring copies of the old ones.
Okay.
Wanna sit up here and I'll share mine with you?
Well, just if I need to refer to anything, right? We'll just talk about it.
Okay.
I mean, I read them.
Yep. I guess, um, what I don't know is, I don't know, sorry, Jerry, where do you...
You wanna start, um, A, B, C, tobacco-free schools?
Um, actually, I wanted to go back a little further.
We already have an agenda that I can look at.
Yeah, you absolutely, certainly.
Um, just before we jump into this, if you don't mind, I just wanted to go back even a little further. Are we bringing anything back to the board, um, the board meeting, BEA? Um, anything other than the second reading?
Well, we have, what we have, we, you reaffirmed B, E, H, D, B, E, H, by the evening, right?
Yep.
Reaffirmed that. Now, did you see my email I sent this morning?
I did.
And it was regarding, have you saw that, Jen? I sent you an email today regarding B, E, D, H, which is public involvement and...
Yes, yes, I read the email, yep.
What you had, you know, while, you know, it was asserted that there's another policy that supersedes the one we have online, there wasn't, there is not one that was approved. There was...
It didn't go through all the hurdles, basically, right?
Right, and doesn't have to go through all the hurdles. What it was, was, there was a motion made in a meeting, this is back 2016, 2017, I forget.
Seventeen, it was the summer of seventeen. I wasn't quite on the board yet, but I was sitting here.
Were you in the community, yeah?
But I was applying to get onto the board at that time. It was of, I believe, Leon and Steve.
So a motion was made.
And Bob.
It was never put into the policy, so, but you all have reaffirmed the policy, so you reaffirm the policy that's already in place, which is somewhat problematic because the motions made in a board meeting of which I was not at, um, to change that policy. But since then, you've reaffirmed the policy that we already have.
The original policy.
The original policy, so I'm not gonna go back and put something new to the policy 'cause you reaffirmed the policy that's already in place.
Can you, without, I can pull out my phone and look at this stuff in there, but what are the, what are the highlights? What are the differences, do you know, off the top of your head?
Yes, I do. They wanted a second, uh, with an open second.
What do you mean by that?
They, they wanted two...
Oh, oh, second meeting, right, okay.
Two public comments, one...
So that's never been...
The only, to only address items on the agenda.
Yes.
And the second one to address anything you wanted.
And that's never been actually...
It was...
Didn't follow all of the processes.
Protocol, okay.
It was voted on, it was a three-oh, because it was back when they were on the three board members at the time, it was a three-oh passed, but it never made it from there into the policy and therefore never made it to the policy, but it made it to the online policy.
Never had a second reading.
So, what are we looking to try to do?
I'm not, here right now, I'm not looking to do anything with it because we have, you have a policy that you reaffirmed, um, two weeks ago.
And it went four and one.
And that was, wow, the speaking, refresh my memory, I've been at work all day, I'm drained.
Okay, it was, um, I think it was what everybody wanted, it was, um, one, fifteen minutes, three minutes apiece, um, on the agenda, and everything else submitted to the superintendent.
Okay.
Typical to what they do at...
So my worry is probably your worry as well, is that we'll seem like an unfriendly board. Um, I really wish we'd been able to come up with something in the middle of people getting to speak, but limiting harassment. I mean, I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, that's not where you can go. What you can do is you can limit time and you can limit the scope of what they talk about in regard to agenda items, but if they stay within that...
It's just unfortunate because they're, I hate to limit the public's access to us. I would like the public to come, I would like the public to come with positive comments, even negative ones if they were helpful, if it wasn't just, um, you know, yelling at us and really nothing is coming of the suggestions. I feel like more it's to slow the cogs of the process down, opposed to actually gain anything. Um, I wish that we could get more positive opinions here, or more, even if they were negative, more opinions we could work with, 'cause I hate to limit it.
Um, actually, for a year, we had a very good comment and culture.
We did.
And we did actually have, uh, two comments that was very, very, very successful.
We did.
I have had comments from people that don't want to come because of the hostility, because of the level of, um...
My, my response to that, though, would be, you know, you, you can't let discomfort keep you from doing the right thing.
I'm just saying what I've been told.
Right, but it would be nice to have that support.
Repeating, repeating that, um, they wouldn't, don't wanna be in the room, unfortunately. Very, 'cause I'm saying, we need, we need, like you, we, please come and tell, tell me that in a room where we could have positive information.
Good and bad, you know, that we can work on.
Anyway, um, okay.
So we are pretty much, we, we affirmed the other one, the, the old one, one speaking period per meeting, agenda items only, submit everything else in writing ahead of time. So we, that supersedes the one that never went through the complete protocol.
There's a lot, there was a lot of, and you saw it in my email, and I went through awful lot of research on that, um, of how that came to be and how, I believe there was one policy at some point that someone wrote up that looked somewhat different than what we have, but it never, it didn't have, it didn't have the revision of the policy we have, you know, in our policy manual now or online, and it didn't have any board members' names on it, who were, who were part of it at all. And I didn't find anything in our minutes that indicated that we discussed it in a policy meeting.
Okay.
And I, and I'm, I was only looking at what was sent to me because not everything was, um, you know, in the SAU, so I'm, I'm looking at what I was given through email, and that's part of how I did my research, you know, as best I could.
Right, right, where else are you gonna find it?
Yeah, it was, so, what you have is that chronology of what happened, and at one point, the policy was brought up, and it was, it said B, H, B, E, H, D, and I think that meant B, D, D, E, D, H.
Right, okay.
So, but I can't, and that was in the minutes, so, you know, I'm going by those minutes, and I'm quite sure that, because that was not, we didn't have a policy by that name, so it's just a typo, but again, doing that back...
That seems reasonable.
Um, so actually, what I meant from my, um, my original question was, um, are, these have all been finished? IA, JK, KB, um, J, uh, hazing, homeless students, and that's it?
Yeah, we have...
They're all completed?
Yeah, they're, they're all, I think they're all the ones I'm looking at there, that was recent, that was, uh, JFA BD was reaffirmed, I think hazing, JICFA, I think that's going, KB and IAJK are all going for second readings tomorrow evening.
Okay, great.
So, the ones I gave you at the top here, uh, ones we've already talked about, A, B, C, that GBEB and JICG are all identical, um...
We touched on those when Tiny was here still, in the meeting in that little room. I think basically we, we wanted to add then was just the, um, electronic...
The jewels and the...
Yep.
Which one are we working on here?
The tobacco products.
We're talking about A, B, C, GBEB, and JICG, and, and that's coming up, you know, even now, where we have kids who may show up with some kind of electronic device, um, and that's, you know, this policy about A, B, C, GBEB, JICG are all individual policies, uh, they are all mirror images of each other.
There is something under E that I wanted to just, um, make a point, um, or maybe this is correct, signs should be placed in all the dis, by the district in all buildings, facilities, and school vehicles. Um, I just was curious, wanted to make sure that was done.
We will, um, I have a double check, but I certainly can, you may note that as well. Just that we'll be checking for signage.
I'll pull these up with my phone. Just that the signs are be placed by the district in all buildings stating that the use of tobacco products is broken.
I'm quite sure we don't have that in the SAU.
Okay.
But, you know, here's the building.
Probably should, right?
Um, well, if we said we were putting policy, we wanna make sure we do it.
Obviously, this is, um, and what were you adding, Jen? What did you add?
We added electronic cigarettes, you know, anything like that.
Well, that was in, that's already defined in there.
Actually, that's in, that's in the new one. That's the whole difference, is the...
Right, that we did last one Tiny was here, yep.
Yep, the E cigarette, the liquid nicotine, I don't even know what that is. And, um, so, that's actually what the update is for the policy.
James will get laughing at it, you know?
Oh, is he? Yeah, sorry.
You laugh at us, but we're healthier.
Okay, so are we bringing that for a first reading?
I, I'm good.
Yes.
First reading, all right.
Is there a motion for that, or do you need that?
Well, we can make a motion if you wanna.
I'll make a motion to bring, um, A, B, C, GBEB, JICG, the tobacco products banned use and possession in and on school facilities and grounds. It also defines facility very, very clearly, any place that's supported by public funds.
Thanks, okay.
So, um, I think it's a...
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just something, housekeeping, I don't know why, but everything I get emailed to me, there's multiple lines that are just gibberish, gibberish, yeah, and it's, it's starting to be a pain.
Yeah.
Some of it I can, some of it I can work out, but some of it I can't, and I'm pretty sure it's not my phone, 'cause it's only the stuff I get from the school.
Talking, shoot me an email while it was, you make sure it's not gibberish.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's only one line. I didn't follow the whole thing there, but...
Okay. All right.
I can speak gibberish if you want me to go back there to seventh grade.
All right, so, DFA will be next.
DFA.
Investment.
That's the one we changed, um, on there, we made the change that...
Yep.
Um, we took away the finance committee.
Yes, yes. Actually, that's, um, that they, the way they have it in, um, I believe they were very similar, but yes, the other very last line in three should read, um, "The investment of funds will be left to the discretion of the board."
Can you toss me one, just a second?
Yes.
No, I, it's 'cause I missed it last time.
Yep. Yeah, I got through, um, the DAF, so that's why I just didn't quite...
That's why Ann's here, Ann's gonna explain DAF to us.
Oh.
Thoroughly.
I'm gonna explain why you need to pass, get it through.
So we're just taking the, um, finance committee away and putting it in the hands of the school board?
There isn't, there's no finance committee.
And that's how it was originally, in, in any way.
Okay.
Other than that, um, I don't, there's, there is no, um, and the Wakefield, that was how it was put in the Wakefield table anyway. All right.
So that's going for a first reading?
Make a motion for that.
Make a motion to bring the, uh, investment policy, uh, DFA, uh, to the board.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Ah, DAF, right, name of the one. DAF is the Administration of Federal Grant Funds, and, uh, and obviously...
So, wanna me to...
You know, if you share that document with me, I'll take notes while you're talking. I'll take any minutes, you wanna Google it?
I don't know how to do that.
Okay, don't worry about it, I'll just take, I'll pencil the notes and...
I mean, I guess I could figure it out, but...
That's okay, well, we'll do a lesson.
Not on camera, right?
Okay, so, we had a financial audit in, um, April, and we had a, um, corrective action plan to correct certain policies. It happened in many districts because DOE wasn't following federal guidelines, so federal guideline, the feds audited DOE, now DOE's auditing schools. So the School Board Association, um, established DAF to cover all of those policies in one policy for schools to have, to be in compliance. That policy is important to be in compliance and voted on by the board because the general assurances that needs to be signed off by the superintendent and the chair, the board chair, that's a part of the assurances, that policy, that we assure that we're following those guidelines. So you are gonna get a copy of the assurances tomorrow night. I've spoken to the, um, person at the DOE that did the audit, because the assurances are supposed to be signed off by June 30th, and he said that I, we can attach to the assurances that are signed off, a statement indicating that the policies are in review and going to the board. But we need to make it happen fairly quickly, and I know it's a long document, um, but we need to kind of move that one forward, that, that's a priority in terms of policies for board to vote on.
Okay. Can I have a question? I did, I mean, I, I read it, and, um, basically, it's very similar to our policy of, well, this one was $10,000, is considered a small purchase, and it doesn't have to go out for bid, and I think it's over 10 to 250, it must go out to bid. I was curious, and it does affect, um, other policies, so I was curious if we could somehow rather verify what's different between our policies for a non, a non-grant fund and a regular sending out for bid because we're just using funds to pay for the sprinkler system, kind of thing.
So, the auditor, Tim Carney is his name, indicated to me that it was advice, it was his advice to have a separate procurement policy for grants.
Okay.
Um, because it's, in IDEA, we now, anything over $10,000 has to go out to bid. So, for example, we use Stratford Learning Center for related services. We now, with the next IDEA grant, will have to make, um, provide notice that we're looking for these services and ask for, um, bids. So, in speaking to the special ed director in Milton, she did that, she put a notice on the website, thought nothing would happen, and got all sorts of bids.
Hmm.
So...
Thanks.
Our contract, our contracted services are basically Stratford Learning Center and New England Center for Children. Um, New England Center for Children is the best in the business. They're pretty close in cost to other, um, BCBA's and that, and the kind of services they provide, so the financial auditor suggested that there should be some language that speaks to not having to take the lowest bid.
There is.
Okay.
There is language in here that, um, there's like DFA 1, 2, 3, 4, and 8, and, um, number 8, I think dealt with those cost principles. Yes, there is, I, I can't pinpoint it at the moment.
That's great, that's, you know, I don't wanna, um, break what's working, and, um, our current related services are working, you know, the Center for Children's working, and Stratford Learning Center is working. So I think this summer, we'll put the, um, we'll put it on the website that we're going out for bid for these, but I'd like to think that the bids that come in will be reasonable enough to maintain our current contracted services. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, um, but yes, there is, I, I was pleased to see that, that cost was absolutely a factor, but so was reliability, dependability, and integrity, so...
I think what you talked about earlier, Tracy, was that you'd like to see if we can align our purchasing policy with this here?
It's, if, it, yes.
Yep.
Maybe keep it separate, but, um, there's a lot of good things in here.
Sure.
And I'm gonna be honest and say I haven't fully read the DA, DAF, so Jerry, if you can email it to me, I'll read it more, so I'm more familiar with what, and make sure it's, um, all of the areas...
And I think there's a lot of choices in there as to who is in charge, is it the BA, is it the superintendent? I think that, if you have a recommendation for that piece of it...
You said the BA?
...business administrator.
Yeah, that's what you said, that was it, sure.
Yes, who is responsible for the, um...
Yeah, who's authorized the submit requests and...
Yeah, or, or that we're following protocol and, and policy, DAF.
Mm-hmm.
But we signed something like this last year, remember, Jen?
So I'm, that's a question I have for you.
You signed your assurances last year.
The general assurances, were they for all the whole board last year?
Yes, they were, because...
Because I have a copy of it, and it asks for, on the bottom, it asks for a signature of the superintendent and a signature of the school board chair. Doesn't speak to whether or not the whole board has to approve it, but I feel like Chris Tari brought it to the whole board.
She did, because prior to, when I saw that, I said before I signed it, how do I have the assurance that we are complying with the assurances? Do you remember that?
I do remember that. It went over like a leg fall.
Yes, it did.
So, I was pretty frank with the, um, person at the state and said that, um, this kind of policy might take a little while to get through our, our current board. Um, and he said, "That's fine, that's the case with many districts, just put it, put something in writing that says it is in process of going through the board."
I, I didn't find anything particular, I, I thought it was good, I thought we could use some of it in some of our other policies.
I mean, they, I think the expectation would take a little time, and the policy only came out in April.
Right.
You know, so we're, we're just getting...
It actually came out because the person that, um, audited us contacted NHSA and said, "You guys ought to help districts see policies in shape," and then it...
All right. Okay, so do we want to, um, table this again for one more, just to make sure we, you want a chance to read it more thoroughly, Jen?
Yes, um, so I didn't get a copy from last time, I guess I need to get copies of everything from last time.
I just printed this one off the phone, this is the one he sent us on the phone, just...
I can resend it to the...
I just, I just...
Is it, is that today?
No, it was last, it was the one, the last meeting.
I just looked at, I seem to have that, I guess.
Last week, I think it was. I give you, um, fine, but it's all marked up.
I have a, um...
If you don't mind, the markings, you can have it.
Are you running as soon as we leave here? Because my package would be here too for tomorrow, and if I could just...
I'll go back to my office.
If I could just print that and take it with me, I'll be, it'll be great, 2:00 AM reading.
I can print it right now, it'll be off in the, should be off.
You need about an hour.
It's a long...
I wake up a lot in the night.
No, I meant that, oh, good, that would put you to sleep.
And so this is gonna print off, I believe, and...
I, I, I thought they did, I thought the New Hampshire School Board did a good job, um, Association.
I think, because it's so big, and she's talking about having a hard time getting it through the board, as, as a whole, I think that we should probably tackle it in pieces. Can we, can we do that, and then...
Sure.
We tackle it in pieces, and then we approve them as we go, and then approve the whole thing at the end?
Well, there are, there are 10 sections here, uh, DAF 1 through 10, we could certainly attack.
Like, 1 through 4 is huge.
Yeah.
When, once you pass 5, it starts to click, actually, maybe it's 6, 7, 8, 9, it starts to go, but the bulk of it, uh, DFA 1 through 4, 5... And, and it's actually, we do, our policies are very similar, I, I don't, I didn't find anything that objectionable at all.
What if we...
It was well thought out and well written.
Have a free look at addressing, um, DAF 1 and 2 at the next policy meeting.
Okay, I would say 1 and 2.
That's what I'm saying, with the size of it...
You know, that's a good idea.
And we just, you know, we just kind of take a couple pieces of whack here and...
Make our changes and...
So, since there, so do you wanna bring out 1 and 2?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's better than the whole thing at once, if it's going, if it's going to be so detailed, let's do it, let's just do it that way.
Okay, so, we'll bring out 1 and 2, okay.
Okay, so, that's, all right, then we want to EB and JLI, which you have in your new packet that they sent you last week.
Oh, so over here.
It's...
Which one is it?
In the, from Thursday.
Oh, EB, EB, so that's in, um...
So, it's three pages, because, you know, we have the NHSBA version, which is EB slash JLI, because again, they are mirror images of each other.
So which were you looking at first, EB?
All right, give me a second, I've gotta move...
If you're looking, any, either one of them, Jen, they're mirror images of each other, so EB for us is the same as JLI.
Okay.
And nothing has been changed, if you look at, uh, JLI, it was reaffirmed September 7th, 2011, before EB, it was revised 21 November, 2012. If you look at the NHSBA version, EB slash JLI, it is the same verbatim as, um, our EB in our JLI.
The only, yep, I agree, they are the same. The only question I have is the safety plan will be on file in each district building and the SAU office? You know, we do have our temporary buildings, so I guess it would be each building then, that's correct.
You can call it that, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if, if you ever, you know, if you ever did something else, you, you moved offsite, or you ended up having, you know, like, like a union school or something like that, which I don't think we're ever gonna do again, but you don't have to, I, I think in this way, it's a little more vague, um, but it gives you more flexibility if you ever have to do something creative.
Okay, but we do have more, we have the SAU and the other temporary buildings, so...
Well, that's considered this building, I mean, they're talking if you have, if you were, say, in Milton, and you had Newt, and you had, um, the elementary school, but this right here can go for, um, reaffirmation, actually, for both JLI and EB.
Yep, yep, yep.
Do you wanna make a motion for that?
Make a motion to, um, bring this for the first reading to the board.
I second that.
EBJL.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, EBJLI, the Joint Loss Management Committee.
All right, now I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. Our next one is EBBD.
I'm sorry, I missed it, Tracy, you, motion?
Motion, Jen, second, all fa, all in favor. All right, the next one is, oh, EBBD.
Bring it for the first reading?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, reaffirmation.
Oh, oh.
Sorry, so you have to strike here.
I misspoke.
I, I just thought it...
I make a motion to bring it to the board for the reaffirmation of EB, of policy.
Can I stop you one second? You wanna remove your, your motion, remove your second?
Uh, I remove the motion for the first reading for EBJLI.
I remove my second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to bring for the reaffirmation of EBJLI, Joint Loss Management Committee.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
EBBD, indoor air quality. Again, it's a mirror image. We adopted this in March fifth, two thousand and fourteen.
So on this, I think we need someone, I haven't been in the pickup line this, you know, this spring. But I really think we need someone out there who's not afraid to tell people they need to shut their cars off. Because people don't shut their cars off. And it's, when I had Caroline in the car with her baby, it was awful because the tail smoke comes radiating either the heater or the air conditioner from up in front. And the signs still out there that say.
You know, I'd have to look, Jen, to see. Sometimes you, you forget to see.
Yes, you see the same thing every day.
Yep.
But there used to be signs that said, please, no, was it?
Shut your engines off or you're no standing zone. I, I think that's, we have the no standing zone, I believe.
It used to say shut the car though.
It would just, and I'm just, I, I say no standing zone. It's, don't pull me on it. But it says, I think it said something to that effect. Let's take a look at it.
Does it not count because it's so far away from the building?
I don't know. I gotta take a look.
Okay.
It's the same policy at the transfer station. You're not supposed to leave your car running.
Right, well, there, there used to be signs and everybody just ignored them anyway. And when you are sitting and, and you, it's not a windows open kind of day, it's a problem.
Yep.
But I don't think that you had, at that point, I don't think you had staff that was either out at the backside of that or willing to tell people to shut them off.
Well, it's also nice, you know, we have a, a school resource officer who has the power, the badge. They can go up there and say,
Yeah.
Because sometimes the people just say, I'm not turning my car if it's cold.
They do, but you have to. I mean, there's the person behind you.
Yep, it is. So let me look into the details.
If you don't wanna turn your car off the engine, so that it's pulling and park.
So we'll look at the details of it, the details of signage, to make sure we have that.
I did notice one difference in that the legal reference in the New Hampshire School Board has RSA two hundred, which is just an investigation of air quality. That isn't on the original.
You know, it's, and I've seen it in a couple of different policies to remove legal references from existing policies.
But they added one.
I, I understand. There, the at remove the legal references from the, these are for our reference. But I, but I've seen that they've, some policies say to remove the legal references.
Why?
I don't know.
It's nice to have right there, handy. Then you don't have to research it.
It's not, we're not changing the content. I think it's still a reaffirmation.
Yep, we can certainly, I don't mind keeping it. It's just, it's just one of the things I found by more research on policy now that.
I think that though, for us, if we wanted to, if we were questioned about it, having it right there at our fingertips is a very good thing. It's kind of like a footnote.
Certainly added in.
Added in, that would be great.
So then it would be a revision.
The other thing is, has it been done recently?
Yep, let's, let's put it up for a revision and a first reading.
Okay. Oh, alright.
Because I, I think it's, you know, I just wanna do, I'd rather have a little overkill. If we're adding something into it, nobody can come back and say, you did it wrong.
Who would do that?
An accusation, just an observation.
So why are you doing your?
Well, we're gonna make, someone's gonna make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to do a first reading for policy EBBD, indoor air quality.
I second that.
And we're gonna, and they're gonna add RSA two hundred, colon, eleven dash A.
Investigation.
Investigation.
Of air quality. As a, it's just a legal reference. It didn't change the content at all. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, here's where the work begins. EEA, EA. And I'm gonna hand out to you something to add on to that. And it is, through some more resources I did, that EEA, EA, R. So, and if you look at the bottom of our policy, it's references appendix EEA, EA dash R. At the very bottom under statutory regulatory references. Okay. We don't have appendix EEA, EA dash R was not in our policy.
Okay.
So I wanna make sure that if we're going to use that as an appendix, that we actually reference that.
So, you're saying we don't have that?
We don't have that.
Oh, we don't have it in our appendix?
Correct. Quite often, if you look at our, if you look at our policies online, you'll see that the, the bottom has, the bottom, say, section E will have appendixes for, appendices for around, maybe more than one appendix, appendices at the bottom. And we don't have EEA, EAI, something like a kindergarten song.
Actually, so here, and, and you brought the appendix?
That's what I just handed you, was that, dash R. So basically, what this goes through is mandatory drug and alcohol testing. Now, if you look at, again, ours, ours was reaffirmed on August twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen. And it looks markedly different than the NHSBA, which was revised in two thousand and eight. EEA, EA seems to be more comprehensive, more, has enough flexibility in it. So if you look at this on our policy, in the second paragraph, the testing will be done by Seacoast Ready Care of Somersworth, New Hampshire. Great company. I'm sure they do a great job. But if they went out of business.
Well, it says or by another equally qualified company.
But I'm not sure if we name anybody in there. And if you look at this, in compliance, our very first paragraph is the fifth paragraph on NHSBAs.
When was ours reaffirmed, Jen?
Ours was reaffirmed August twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen. It was revised by NHSBA, two thousand and eight. We didn't revise, we've not revised it since that revision.
Well, when it says reaffirmed, the last three things, it was adopted by the board in two thousand and one, it just reaffirmed. That means it wasn't changed, right?
Correct.
In two thousand and two, two thousand and five and two thousand and thirteen. So it hasn't been adjusted at all for twelve, well, now it's two thousand and nineteen, so for eighteen years.
Right, so if you see, again, they brought new policy in May, two thousand and six from NHSBA.
It says reaffirmed on this one, though.
They're significantly different.
Remarkably different.
Remarkably different. And one basically deals with random alcohol testing. And this one discusses new hire testing. But the very, very last paragraph addresses random where it says the drug and alcohol testing will include pre-employment, random, et cetera. And it also says point oh two or greater. I don't know if I was. I thought that was higher than what I would be interested in seeing.
And it says the same thing in the NHSBA, the bottom, the last sentence.
But what, this policy is all about random testing. And it doesn't even talk about medical exams or school bus driver's certi, certificate, background.
Which one does it? Ours or the state's?
Ours does not. The state has all that information, but ours goes on for about five paragraphs with random testing. I don't know why it's not in the states. That was my question.
What does an annual rate of fifty percent of the safety sensitive positions mean? That fifty percent of them will be done every year?
But if it hasn't been done since two thousand and one.
Is that what that means though?
Where you, are you on this, on ours?
Yeah, I'm on ours, one, two, three, fourth, fourth paragraph down. I wasn't sure how to, how to interpret the percentages above it as well. Connected an annual rate of twenty-five percent of safety sensitive positions, the drug testing, random drug testing, annual rate of fifty percent. So basically, they pull names. If we have twenty employees, they pull ten names a year.
I, I get a, well, I, we will get a, a statement quarterly about who's being tested. And so I'll, they won't know and it might be this random. So you might get the same person might get chosen
Right.
three quarters in a row.
Right. Unless just so they don't feel safe after they have the first one, really.
Well, it's, yeah.
It is. That's why it's random.
It's random. So, you know, someone might not get chosen all year and someone else might get, be chosen two or three times.
Right.
And they can't know about it until an hour before they're supposed to go down. So we don't tell them until nine o'clock in the morning after they've been dropped off and they've gotta go down and do the test.
My concern is this hasn't been addressed since two thousand and one. So although I, I'm, you know, obviously all for the random, I just don't know if the data's correct any longer.
The percentages and such?
Yeah.
So should we, should we do a total revision?
I think so.
Do you wanna, we can do some, I can do some more research on this one with Brennan. If we can find out what the standards are and I can have a few more answers for you, given the details.
That would be great.
Okay, so.
So this one we are going to have Brennan.
Yep, some more information.
I think what we were doing a lot back before, when we were meeting before, was looking very closely at the state one and finding if there's anything we wanted to change in the state one and pretty much adopting theirs because they were so well done.
I think they're more comprehensive and they, they, they tend to, the details and the laws, they might have a better handle on than
Right.
we do, the details of it. But I'd like to do a little more review.
Add in what we need.
What do the numbers look like? What is that, that point or two? What's that, you know, do we, is it inferred that it's, you know, fifty percent have to be tested based on, is that part of CF, you know, forty-nine CFR, part three ninety-one? Is that inferred because they're referencing that? So let me find out what those numbers are.
I agree with you. I would absolutely keep the, the New Hampshire School Board one. It has additional information that is very relevant. I, and if I was, since this one is on such a different topic, did we want to include it? I wasn't.
Maybe we just need to add the random testing to, to the point that we're comfortable.
Right.
Right?
And that's, you, you can go sit and go above what the law requires.
I don't wanna have, I don't wanna add, like, have multiple things touching on the same policy because I think that makes it murky. You know, I don't wanna have ours and theirs. I wanna have the one we adopt and have it be straightforward. This is, this applies to this. There's nothing else to reference. You know what I mean? It's all there.
So do you wanna not go down this?
I, I wanna go down it, but you're saying keep them both and I don't wanna do that.
No, in cor, no, I meant include it.
Incorporate. I think what you were saying, Tracy, was take pieces and add it into.
Absolutely. It gets to, I agree with you.
NHSBA's EEA, EA.
Yes.
And go with them.
So, so this one has research with Brennan.
And then look, now I should, I should, you know, if you look at EEA, EAR, you have that, that language about the random testing at the bottom here. So if you look at the one I just handed you, Jen, there is more language in there, but I wanna find out, you know, what's. So that goes into the.
So you're saying that the Wakefield policy refers you back to this?
Which we don't have.
Which we don't have.
So we've got a.
So you're talking about a total revision?
You're talking about, yeah, revision or adoption, you know, adoption of.
Adoption of a new policy.
NHSBA's version of EEA, EA and EEA, EAR.
So you're kind of tabling it because you're going to do some research?
Further research.
We're gonna, I'm gonna come back and talk to a person who knows more than I do about it, so. And I'm sure, certainly educate me, I'm sure.
Yep, but we know where we are. There's, our policies are very different.
Well, and that brings us over to EFAA meal. And this is a priority. It's required by law. And it was a, a new policy that was introduced in May of two thousand and seventeen. And we don't have EFAA for meal charging. What we do have is EFA meal policy. But before we go further with that, we also, NHSBA has a policy, EFA, that's, it's different than meal policy. So they have EFA availability and distribution of healthy foods. Ours is EFA meal policy, which really deals with more of the, the information that we'll find in EFAA.
When, when I was reading them, initially I, I thought, oh my goodness, they are so erratic. One is, the New Hampshire School Board is, is very brief and it, and it basically says.
Okay, so look at the top lines. You see what's happening when I get stuff from that. It was on our school board meeting minutes last Tuesday. I showed it to Larissa, but everything they download from, from her comes out that way.
I have, yeah, I don't know if it goes, I can't remember if you have that.
When did this new policy?
EFAA was a new sample policy from NHSBA in May, two thousand and seventeen.
And there's the sample policy, I mean?
EFA from NHSBA was a new sample policy in May of two thousand and twelve and was revised, revised in two thousand and fourteen.
What does sample mean in a policy?
They, that means a sample, they, NHSBA is part of our service. They created a big level legally to stuff and we just reap the benefits.
Our EFA policy is all about meal charging and what happens if somebody owes money and, and the rules that apply. The last time it was revised was two thousand and fifteen. The, the EFA policy that the, the School Board Association now has under EFA literally speaks about meal preparation and quantity and distribution and make sure that everybody has beverages in the school during the day. And it's quite brief and, and that's it. It doesn't talk about meal charging or overcharges or anything like that. EFAA is about, this was the one that I did, ten pages long about charging.
Yep, and the first three pa, first three and a half pages of EFAA are more for your, just, it's more for your understanding as you're reading it. It's not to add in. So if you look at page four, the fourth page on EFAA.
You can see it right.
And where it starts up at ten, bullet number ten, you're on the right page right there.
Alright.
Really, right, that's down here, midway down, something underlying EFAA. That's really where the policy starts. I think, you know, really what we should do here is look at meal policy, EFA, which I gave you, and look at what you'd like to incorporate from EFA into their EFAA, because that covers, this is kind of more where that meal policy belongs. And then adopt EFA NHSBA as our policy, EFA.
Right. So I can't read bullet number ten because it's that funky stuff.
You want me to take it?
Take the one.
No, you can take mine. It's fine.
Take mine, I do. I, I didn't read actually. I haven't gotten this.
A lot of times I can surmise what's there, but on that one I can't. Does this, yeah, it's, it's like spaces and, yeah. Is this, because what it says here is what the consequences, what are the consequences for parents that fail to re, do. So repay the debt is my assumption or something like that? And that's what we brought up in school board meeting recently. So that would be incorporated into this.
Well, this actually takes into new laws, et cetera. So ours is by two thousand and fifteen. This was revised in two thousand and seventeen. But yes, I agree. Our EFA should reflect the New Hampshire School Board, EFA, and our EFAA, which is the meal charging policy should reflect the School Board Association, EFAA.
And this is a great time to do it. School's ending. You can bring EFA up and adopt EFA. We can work on processing the meal policy from EFA into EFAA and be prepared when school starts to have a comprehensive EFAA that deals with, you know, what the meals, meals should look like, what the cost should be, you know, who's responsible. You know, EFAA goes into talking about, you know, parents are responsible to educate their children on what they can and cannot take out of the cafeteria. But it doesn't become the responsibility of the kitchen staff to say, oh, you can't have that. Mom doesn't want you to have this. That more becomes the responsibility between the parent and the child.
That's good.
That's really good.
Yes, actually, it's, it's, and when we discuss it, we'll have.
Our food service people should not be responsible for the kid's behavior in any way, shape or form.
Not for, not for, especially not for taking food.
For anything, not for anything.
But to say, oh, your mom says you can't have French toast sticks. You're supposed to have that. That's four hundred and fifty kids and there's seventy kids in the building.
No, it shouldn't be that way.
And I think when we do discuss the meal charging policy, we will be current and up to date having read the New Hampshire School Board Association policy because they know the latest legislation.
So how about, I try to blend the two together. I will probably do something in color so we can look at what the different, the added portions are.
That would be great.
So we can say, okay, this is bad and then add it. Because I don't, I really don't wanna change much on EFAA as it's required by law and, you know, most, I don't want, so this stuff is not legally easy. We don't have to worry about it.
Can we adopt EFA, the New Hampshire School Board, EFA, the way it is here where it just, and where we would have then two EFAs? Do you know what I mean? Until we deal with the EFAA?
I would say, and then maybe make a motion to table policy, EFA, that was approved, revised on April first, two thousand and fifteen. Put that in hiatus and adopt EFA that was a new, a sample policy from.
Let's, I'll get a copy.
As a sample policy in May, two thousand and twelve, revised two thousand and fourteen. And we'll adopt this as our EFA, put that up on the website. This goes into hiatus because we're out of school anyway. We have to worry about meal policy for another couple of months. We can revise that, add that in here and when we come back.
So what policy are we tabling?
We are going to adopt the New Hampshire School Board, EFA, availability and distribution of healthy foods.
Well, we're going to talk about adopting that. We're going to talk about adopting that. We have to bring it for the board.
Well, we're gonna
I'm just, I guess I'm just telling you what we, what we just spoke of, not what we're going to do. And then, um, his suggestion is to table the Wakefield EFA, which is the meal charging, so we can discuss it over the summer.
Or we're gonna table it for good and bring this other one into play.
Right.
So I would make a motion to, um, bring EFA for a first reading, EFA from May two thousand twelve, revised fourteen, for a first reading.
Okay, um, so you're saying this one, new set?
Yep.
Okay, um, I will make a motion to bring for a first reading, EFA, availability and distribution of healthy foods of May of two thousand twelve, revised May of two thousand fourteen.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then bring, um, and let the board know that EFA that we have is obsolete in regard to the policy numbering, and we're gonna look to incorporate
EFAA.
EFAA and EFA that we have.
So I will, and we are going to table
And we'll bring this back to the policy committee.
EFAA.
Can you zip a copy of that up to, in the printing thing?
Which one, what do you want?
E, F, A, A.
You could have mine, I can make another copy.
Okay, thanks.
I have one, EFAA.
You want, you want the EFA from?
Yeah, that would be it. I missed out on it the last time.
Take it all.
Oh, here it is, okay, thanks. And, um, I don't know if we need to vote in, I guess, I, I, I'd like to make the motion to table EFAA meal
Yeah, we can make a motion for that.
Okay, good, policy for the summer.
We're just gonna be, can figure revise that.
Alright, so...
And that's all I have on the agenda.
Yee-haw.
You don't happen to have a policy that's right on hand that refers to the thing I was, I emailed you about earlier, but tomorrow? Is there one?
We can talk, I don't think so, I have no vote, but I believe, so, um, we can certainly talk about that after.
Okay.
I thought we would.
I just wanna, what I have here, um, on the table appears to be emergency care, first aid, is that still, I have four policies. Wow, we went through a lot, actually.
Those are, I think those are up for, those first or secondary, we have, we have, I think, three policies up for a first reading tomorrow, and three policies up for a second reading tomorrow.
Okay.
And if we're already dealt with them, we did deal with them here, they're up for a first or second reading.
The NICAN, is it called, the, the drug, the one?
That one right there.
We were waiting for the NICAN. That's alright, I just, I have four, that's the only thing.
We can have discussion on that, 'cause, I mean, the thing, last thing, we were waiting on that, either wait for the discussion from me, or I found from the town, how about NARCAN, you asked me, you were asking what?
Yep, we were asking you. I think Jen said, oh, what was the cost? And the dose, and do the, does, do the Wakefield police have it, or do it?
Yeah, I had those numbers with me last week I came, and I didn't bring it with me this time.
Does our, um, in-house officer have that with him?
What I, what the police have is, according to the officer I spoke to, um, you know, at the, at the police station, is they have it for their own personal use, if they're exposed to an opiate.
Oh, yeah.
They have it for themselves, but it's not to administer in an emergency situation to anybody else.
Okay, who does have, does anybody in town have that? EMS does?
EMS is what they call them.
Oh, but EMS does have that. It, I have written down here, you must have told me, between forty and seventy dollars per dose.
Yeah, thank you.
Forty and seventy, and, uh, the recommendation was to follow the Wakefield Police Department policy. That was the suggestion.
I don't know that policy, I, I asked them what they carry for.
And what did we find out about how long it is before it expires?
I didn't find that out.
Okay. I just wonder, I mean, if we shouldn't have one on hand specifically for a student.
Children.
Not, 'cause we discussed earlier that a parent was an issue or whatever, but I don't think we should be responsible for that. But, ah, on that, you know, off chance that that reaches the school, if it's not something that expires quickly, then it might be something that we might keep in the nurse's office, hoping to never have to use it. Yeah, specifically for, let's say, staff and students.
No, I, I, I don't disagree. I guess I'd like to have discussion with the school nurse about what her expectation is, and what's her understanding of opiate related to emergency. I'm thinking to myself, how do I know, you know?
How do you know that that's what it is? So you wanna call EMS, right?
No, I'm not, not saying, I'm not saying I wanna call EMS for it. I'm, I'm saying, I guess I'd wanna have more understanding of our, our own professional capabilities and understanding.
'Cause how do you know that's what's happening?
Exactly.
Yes.
And what's the ramification if we administer a nasal, um, they use a nasal spray? What's the ramification if we administer to someone who's had a seizure instead?
Oh, yeah, yep, tough stuff.
Is it a diagnostic thing, and again...
Does it do anything, right? Does it, will it do harm?
Could be somebody having a seizure, Ryan's type one, somebody having a diabetic, I, I don't, I'm not saying I have a...
It could be anything that we don't know.
I, I do, that...
I haven't had enough knowledge myself, and...
But I would like to know that Wakefield has a resource, if the EMS, EMS is right there, like...
And they're quick, I mean, they're, they're fast.
Have you been meeting now? They're busy.
Oh, no.
Wow.
Really?
Yeah, they're busy.
Missed that out on, uh, oh, um, anybody have anything to say?
Nice, got a lot to do.
Got a lot done.
Can I, can I, can we just, um, I'd like to wrap up what we have in front of us. We have a lot of policies on the table, but before we bring you any more new policies, can we just wrap up what we have here?
Okay.
I'm just gonna like...
So, yeah, well, you'll bring a list, we'll, we have a list tomorrow, right, tomorrow's meeting, that'll clear off second readings, right?
We're gonna clear off second readings, we will go into first, we'll hopefully address first readings tomorrow. We have enough on our plate here, between here and what's on the agenda for tomorrow, to get through another policy meeting or two. And then we're not taking on too much that we're getting
In process of too many things.
Yeah. I, I, my fear is I end up missing something, and then we've addressed it, but it never gets into the policy.
Like the one we spoke of earlier, sure.
Listen, we're making our way.
We're getting our way through it, and some of the pages here.
This is, uh...
Okay, I have a copy of that.
Yes, yeah.
How come you don't have all this stuff and I don't have it?
I don't know. I'm pretty sure there was one that said Jen, so I could just grab one that said Tracy, I'm pretty sure there's another.
Where was it?
This is.
From the last one, or?
I have, I, you know, I did bring my folder with me, but I have others in the folder. I have multiple copies of that. And some of those, if you go through it, when you're looking at Tracy, you'll see that we've dealt with them here, and they come up a couple other times, or one or two other times.
Right.
Because I said, this is a couple of years' worth of, um, legal, you know, required, legally required policies.
Right.
So we, we can already check them off, 'cause we've already done them now, we'll check them off ahead.
Right.
We wouldn't have to go through them again.
And we do have a policy in place to update the policy in the book and online now.
So let's talk about the book for a second. I know that when I first came on the school board, Dr. Tyree had asked me if I wanted to help data enter stuff. Has that been proceeding?
What?
The data entry of having the handbook online, because...
I can tell you, I, we have, the only, I have had Larissa add online are the new ones.
Well, because my, my question about getting too deep in this is, I think before we get too far in it, we gotta correct it, because you can't, Spalding's is fantastic. You can, you know, find, you can search for keywords. I, I don't believe you can do that, um, and it's much more user-friendly, and I think, I think that we should do that. I think we should emulate that one, and not do one that's not really usable.
Yep, I, I don't disagree. Before I had access to NHSBAs, I would use Rochester's as my, my reference.
It's, it's very easy to use.
Yep.
I, I don't think ours, yes, I think it hasn't, other than the new ones, I don't, I'm, I, I don't, I would be interested to know how far back they were entered.
I, I, well, I can tell you, they weren't entered from the one that was, um...
Seventeen.
Seventeen, that was added in a board meeting by a vote, and it didn't make it to the policy. So I don't know, and I can only tell you that, at this point, we've only been adding the ones that we've been updating here.
Okay.
Yeah, and when I go online to look at, excuse me, a policy, often, the policy is online, but when you click it, it doesn't come up, which means it hasn't been added.
Well, that and
Hasn't been added?
Right.
Well, BEDH, like I said, you know, we, we had, it was online, but it never made to our policy menu, so, you know, I'm coming through policy, I typically read the policy, man, I always have, and then just go through there, and I expect it's gonna be updated. So what we wanna do is create a new policy book, make sure we get all our policies that are most up to date, based on what we have online. And, because I don't think board members have been given policy manuals.
I have one.
I don't.
Yeah, you have.
So, see, I might have that, but you have a whole new one, I don't.
Yeah, I'm always gonna use the little piece of paper, you gave me that thing, it's really big and very difficult to navigate.
This point is...
Without knowing, yeah, it's not, it's not user-friendly for, for sure.
I think you have one, and Ralph has one. I don't have one. I don't know if Bob has one.
Tiny, did Tiny bring hers back?
She didn't have one.
I thought she wants to have one as well.
Yeah, I would have, I would have thought, are you sure she didn't have one? Okay. I'm sure it's not, nothing she wants to hold on to, she did.
It's very expensive. I'm happy to go online and look up the policies, so, that we're doing, and I like it this way.
But they're not all there, Tracy, that's the thing, they're not all, they're not all online.
You know what, the ones that we're discussing, you send me ahead of time, so I have an opportunity to read it. You sent me both, New Hampshire School Board, two copies of the older versions, um, and that's cheaper right now. I think a book would be very expensive. So I'm not looking to spend money there.
It's a couple reams of paper, anyway.
Right, so, um, I, I'll, I'm, this has been great for me, um, just to keep, this is, I can port, you know, it's not
Right, yes.
a big old book, so I'm happy to do it this way. Actually, what I was curious about is, which would have been really, really helpful as a new board member, is if we have a topic that has come up that we discuss policy, bringing the policy as, as a policy, bringing the policy to the meeting, so that if there is someone who hasn't had the, um, history, policy's there. You can supersede policy, as I, you know, we have voted to waive a few things, because there was no time to, the sprinklers were sprinkling on the kids, and, you know, time was of the essence. But that was just an idea.
Yeah.
So, we could even be a better board. Anyway, um, anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.